So the place that really needs to be the starting point is what actually comes out of the Brown versus Board of Education case. And I also promise, this is the only big scary slide that I've got. I am very opposed to death by PowerPoint. But as we can read in that first bullet there, the Supreme Court's decision from the Brown v Board of Education case was that we conclude in the field of public education, the doctrine of separate but equal has no place. Separate education. And so this massive idea, when people hear Brown v Board, they think some big decision that either just really it was public schools, private schools were still segregated, outside of schools was still segregated, buses, lunch counters, movie theaters, housing, all of that still segregated. In addition to read the full opinion of this excerpt was from, you wouldn't ever find a date as to when things would have to integrate by. And this is May 17th, 1954, that the Supreme Court pushes this opinion out. And they don't actually resolve anything with the resolution of the case where they actually say, here's what we're going to do to fix it. Until May 31st of 55. So it takes them more than a year to give any kind of a timeline. And even that gives the states to integrate with all deliberate speed. What does that even mean? Deliberate is usually well thought out and slow and speed obviously being fatigued. And it means to every person that you would explain it to. So how is it that a decision that was limited to public schools to be integrated at some point becomes such a monumental milestone that a national historical dedicated to it with rangers like myself trying to communicate the triumphs that made up the Well, this case is not insulated incident. It comes from a larger push from a group called the National Association of Colored People. And this, this particular push, we could go all the way back to the inception of the nation if we want. But this particular push comes out of another Supreme Court decision about 50 years prior. Plessy v Ferguson case. And it's coming from a place where they are trying treatment in the same place at the same time to generate because prior to Brown, there was this other case where they post slavery America trying to grapple with the idea of white supremacy. And so what we saw right after slavery were things like black codes coming to be, where we had these former states that had seceded saying, well, if we can't own human beings anymore, we're going to control them. We're going to say, hey, in this particular state, if you are caught without your work papers on your person at any given time, and you are a person of color, you could be arrested and sent to prison. Or if there are four or more people of color gathered in a public park, even though we have reassembly, you could be arrested and sent to prison for And luckily, this period is fairly short-lived because this actually passes the 14th amendment guaranteeing equal protection of the laws to any person within a state's jurisdiction. But what we see in response to that is this development from the opposition who had created the black codes to begin with saying, well, if we can't control these people, then what we're going to do is separate from them. And in that case, we see, or in that time period, we see this case very similar to a very well-known story. Most of us are familiar with with Rosa Parks. But Homer Plessy actually doing the same thing 50 years prior of sitting in a white seat and refusing to give it up when asked to move. And he was arrested and sent to prison and is represented by the Citizens Committee of New Orleans. And they make a very valid argument when they're trying to heal his case, saying that segregation creates a second-class citizen system in the United States where it says that anybody who is separated main group, in this case being whites, is seen as less than or inferior and being included in that group damages their reputation. Yes, ma'am?
Preston, I hate to say this, but you're kind of pausing a bit, you know, we're still a little, okay.
Okay. So it's the internet given out?
That's it. That sounds better. Yeah.
All right. Well, I'll go a little slower. We can repeat some talking the Plessy v Ferguson case, correct?
Yes.
Still got you? Okay. And Homer Plessy actually refusing to give up his seat for a white person. And that, that argument that the Citizens Committee of New Orleans brings being that it creates a second class of citizen and it damages the reputation of any person included in that class. And that segregation was under the 13th amendment because it was racially based, as was slavery, and therefore it was an extension of slavery. The Supreme Court said, well, no, it's not. No, it didn't. It doesn't. Basically saying, actually in not so many words, literally saying that it was the fault of the affected party. Nation had been damaged. Some were killed off the train. And if they don't like it, it's their own fault for feeling that way. NAACP was counting
Preston, I hate to say this. We're getting some comment.
Opinion?
We're getting some comments in the chat that you're fading in and out. Yeah. One person says
Let me see if we can switch the internet one more time then.
It says if you close.
They lose me for
Okay. Okay. We'll
Let me see. Let me turn off my video here then and see if that raises the bandwidth a little bit.
That, yeah, someone made that suggestion. Yeah. Okay.
The screen here?
The screen still see Brown v Board. Yeah.
Okay. We'll give it another shot here. We'll see if maybe it is peak hours during. So my node is probably very busy.
Okay.
Am I, we'll give it a chance. We'll give it another two minutes or so, and then I may switch to another connection.
Okay.
See if I'm breaking up here.
Okay.
Is it sounding a little better?
You're saying, yeah, you're sounding better. Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Then probably the bandwidth issue with my camera then. So what ends up happening is the Supreme Court has said that we are kicking black people off the train. And if they don't like it, it's their own fault, saying it's the fault of the affected party for interpreting their reputation as being damaged. And so what happens with that is that mentality and that logic rubber stamps this idea of white supremacy and separatism and segregation in the United States. And we start to see this national hatred rising up. And that is what the NAACP is trying to counter, that logic that it's so the fault of people of color, or that it's acceptable to experience this or to harbor this hatred across the country. And ultimately, they had come up with a plan to try and attack segregation across the country. But their thought was if they could integrate children and bring them together and see that our differences are not something to be hated, or something to be celebrated, then that new generation could help with dismantling those systems and processes that had began to separate and instill hate across the country. So what we focus on is public schools and trying to integrate these public schools so these children can be raised together. And they start looking at the places where it is the most obvious horrendous examples of segregation where you can look at a situation and tell that it is completely unequal and unfair because the Plessy decision had said things could be separate so long as they were equal. And things in a lot of the American South were nowhere close to equal. And to quote Richard Kluger, who wrote Simple Justice, something of the the Brown v Board history Bible, so to speak, if you look anywhere in the Union where life for black folks had changed the least look no further than Clarendon County, South Carolina. And so the NAACP had looked at Clarendon County, South Carolina to try and present, oh, man, where are my pictures go? They're there. The examples of inequality and everything wrong with these segregations that the Supreme Court had approved. And so here we have a school in Clarendon County, South Carolina. This is Somerton Grade School. It is a verbal work, construction, building, individual classrooms, libraries with all the books the kids could ever read. Teachers with advance, buses to and from, state heating and cooling system, heck, indoor plumbing. All things on this list were not provided to children down at Liberty Hill, a school about five miles away in the same district. And so this was the school for children of color. It was a one-room wood and tar paper shack, burning stove for heat and an outhouse for their facilities. They would say, looking at these two situations is that, oh, these are completely equal. Well, that doesn't add up. And see, the mentality at the time was that, well, the 14th amendment says equal protection, not provision of the laws. So if they had lowered the bar on what was being protected to just four walls and a teacher. Well, yes, technically both schools have four walls and a teacher, but that's nowhere close to equal. But luck to anybody coming from the local area trying to challenge this mentality that had been sweeping the nation. And so NAACP wanted to take this situation and put it into the federal court system where they just had to show a federal judge basically pictures of these two schools and get what's called a prima facie ruling at face value. You knew it was wrong. And their concern, not so much with the specifics of what are we going to argue this case, it's once this case is argued and won, how are we going to resolve it? Now, their initial was actually pretty smart. They knew that the school board had spent all of its money building those white schools like that one on the right-hand side there. And so they said, you know, this is the 19, is at this point that they're taking cases much like Clarendon Counties. They say, what if we demand that they build a copy of that white school for those black students? They're never going to be able to afford it. But that's what they go in and demand. That is what would make things truly equal. If you build a school for one set of students, build an equal school for the other. It makes sense fair. But the school board or retorts, we were afforded. It would bankrupt us. We don't have money to do that. NAACP says, okay, then let's just let the students from the black school go to the white school. Everybody gets the same supplies. It's fair and equal that way. Which fantastic job coming up with that idea. Pinning the morals of segregation up against the money was a little make a choice. However, the issue with that was the judges weren't going to let that fly. They knew that a white community would not tolerate black students in a white classroom. Because they had been seeing race riots, saying that the NAACP was trying to count, they'd been seeing the same thing. Didn't want the blood on their hands of white or white parents beating black children in the streets. And they said, we know this isn't going to work if we just try to integrate these kids immediately. So let's ask the school board and say, well, what, what money do you have? And see if maybe they can equalize, fix up that black school. Maybe putting in a dividing wall where there's a wheelhouse or giving a hand-me-down bus from school to the black school. Or even going to a consignment sale for another school that's closing down and buying books for pennies on the dollar. Because those children didn't have any books. They didn't have any transportation. It was kindergarten through 12th grade, all in one classroom. But that would fix those things. It's fair and equal. And when the NAACP comes back to challenge and say, those improvements are still unequal and unfair. Board gets to say, well, we're working in good faith. We did everything that the courts asked us to. We equalized the school and you're still asking for more? You're the aggressor here. The NWP had an even steeper hill to climb each time they came back to try and correct case. And it wasn't just Clarendon County. See what they were asking and Clarendon County was actually the last ones. But what they were asking was if we could just get one judge to say that school was integrated and if we could get one judge to try and integrate these kids, we could use that as a precedent. And so they tried in location after location, place after place, over and over and over again, trying these different areas, just seeing if they could get a judge who will in favor of integration, but each time just being met with equalization. So they decided it was time for a change. And what they ended up doing was they hired a man named Charles Hamilton Houston. And I don't know if I've got slides. I do not. And by the name of Charles Hamilton Houston. And he says, this is a fantastic NAACP hat, but it is time to crank it up to 11. What we are going to have to do is we are going to have to find someplace not not few black opportunities like in these schools. Here we have at least a building here. Let's find one where there are no opportunities whatsoever, where there is absolutely nothing being provided. And let's show that as the level of inequality. And rather than just going after these individual public school districts, let's go after the states themselves. Because if a county school district goes under the state, let out, who's going to help bail out the states? The federal government doesn't want to get involved and make another statement on segregation at the time. Because they're fighting their, their own or wrestling whether or not states should be required to segregate or if they should have the freedom to choose, allowing it to prohibit in some states to mandate. So the federal government doesn't want to touch it with a 10-foot. And Charles Houston says, let's take advantage of that. And so they take a case and they go in Maryland where they had been sending a young man up to Delaware in order to learn the law rather than admit him into the white public law school in Maryland. And they say, well, Delaware cannot prepare him for a law career in Maryland. There are different laws. And they're absolutely right. They win the case and Maryland has to admit the young man into the public law school. But it's only for Maryland. And they say, okay, well, let's expand further. Let's see if we can get another case and set some other precedent. Let's see if we can look a little bit bigger. And rather than focusing so much on the 13th amendment, they began to focus on the 14th amendment. That equal protection of the laws for each of the states, required to provide equal protection. And they say, okay, well, let's, let in this aspect, let's go to Missouri. Missouri is doing the same thing as Maryland. And then somebody up to Iowa and saying, well, I pick up our slack because we don't have a interracial public law school. We just have the white one. But Iowa, they've got this interracial school. Pay his tuition. We'll send him up. But the NAACP says, no state shall deny equal protection of the laws. That is the 14th amendment. Iowa cannot be expected to pick up the slack of Missouri. Missouri has to give the same opportunities as they do for whites as they do for blacks. They have to, have to, have to within the state lines. And they all to the US Supreme Court with this idea, who orders the case be reheard at the Missouri level? After affirming, yes, each state has to give the same opportunities. Unfortunately, the case never sees a resolution at the level of Lloyd Gaines goes missing in between that Supreme Court decision and the rehearing of the case. Now, some say he is in Mexico. They say there's maybe a few letters after he had escaped. But I put it to you, what, what do you think happened to a young black man demand equality in 1930s Missouri? Not to pick on Missouri at all. I used to live in Missouri, but my guess is that Lloyd Gaines was murdered. But NAACP was still able to take a small victory from this. And the Supreme Court affirmed each state has an obligation to those opportunities. And so they take a case out of Texas with the University of Texas out in Houston. And what they found is that they had slap dashed an annex for Negroes together in Austin. And so they were admitting students into the university, but they were sending them to this basement of an office building they had rented. Tossing a couple of books and just assigning some adjunct professors to it and saying, there, we made a law school. Well, a few books does not a law school. And so they go into this case, what they want to do is overturn the Plessy versus Ferguson with that idea that if you feel your reputation image, it's your own fault for feeling that way. What they want to do is get away from these tangible, physical things that you can touch and show there is something And so through this case, what they end up doing, they talk about these additional things, these intangible things that you can't touch, but have value in your educational experience. And they have a particular genius in that this case is about a young man trying to go to law school. At the time, what they had been focusing on was nursing schools and law schools. Nursing school women, law schools predominantly men at the time, the big public fear was race mixing. So what they weren't going to go for was these public schools right at that moment and try and scare the jury into, oh, no, all of these high school kids are going to go off to make out point. No, they're sending one young woman off to nursing school, one young man off to law school. What's the harm? They've disarmed some of their primal fears there. They're also going in and talking and pulling on this judge's heartstrings of saying, your honor, this is just a young man who wants to be an attorney, much like yourself. Who are you to tell him he came like you? And then in the Sweat v Painter case, they hamstring the defense by talking about these issues that have to do with law schools themselves that make one better than another, such as the faculty of a school. You have a mentorship and a partnership and a learning ability that you can have at one school because of this phenomenal teacher that you just cannot have at another school because it lacks the same, I guess, like, degree of the teachers involved. Because of the amount of students that might attend a university, you get more opportunities to learn from your fellow students and debate and work back and forth and get a wider variety of ideas. You also develop relationships on down the road, especially for an attorney, result in real-world gains in your practice. Where you might have a client approach a friend of yours who says, hey, I've got this question. I'm going through a nasty divorce. Your friend can say, you know, I'd love to help, but I do property law. But my friend over here, they're a family attorney or family law attorney. And so they refer a client your direction. A friendship has resulted in money in your pocket. And you have more of those opportunities being integrated with the larger class. And then the last bit, when you go and try to apply for a position and you're trying to work at a law firm or maybe clerk for somebody, something like that. You have this big fancy law school as compared to this small annex. Everybody knows the annex didn't have any of the resources that the school itself had. They're going to hire the person who went to the law school proper over the person who went to the law school annex 10 times out of 10. And that is not within the control of the affected party. So when they say that that reputation has been damaged, they can show that just by going to that annex, you have fewer opportunities to somebody in the main school. And the Supreme Court attorneys themselves, knowing all of these things to be true, going through these, this practice, they absolutely agree. They say, unless the University of Texas can make a second campus with all the same resources and prestige as the main university, they must admit human sweat into University of Texas. And with that turning of the logic, the NAACP says, now it's time. We're going to take this that we had in Texas in this peculiar law school, or not peculiar law school, but in this niche market. Now we're going to apply it across the country. But what we need is a location where we're not going to get hung up on the big differences that we're seeing in front of us right now. We don't want this brick building versus a one-room shack. We want to just talk about the bigger issues like we did with Sweat. And that's what brings them here to Kansas, where we have Monroe Elementary School here. This building built in 1926, as we can see on the front, fairly ornate, especially for the cement work at the time, front there. And in this garden classroom that we've tried to restore as much as possible as, as the experience of the students at the time of this, we can see a lot of amenities. We see this state-of-the-art radiator that's actually keeping the students toasty warm. That eye chart, the teachers actually hold up nurses a little bit. Examining their students at the beginning of the year, placing them further or closer toward, maybe if kids butt heads at recess, making sure they get the same score, they don't have a concussion, they're not seeing blurry. It was in their contract to be able to play piano. That room in the back there, that is a bathroom for these students so that they don't have to fight with eighth graders when they're trying to, to use the facilities. Haven, this big, huge fireplace in this classroom was entirely decorative. The purpose behind it was the architect felt if he brought an element of home into the classroom, students would feel more at ease. It was never meant to have a fire. Because again, they had this radiator here. Even have play sets so they can play inside. This is the bathroom we had discussed. All of these things in this lovely facility here during the time of segregation. And this building that we looked at was for the black students here. It was one of four African-American schools at the time, built the same year as Randolph Elementary, one of the counterparts to white students. But they were designed by the same architect. If you look at these two photos, look in the, the design and the windows there, the little brickwork, even the radiators that you can see in both of those, they're black in these images instead of the white that they were. But even the layout of the chalkboards, they have the same spacing up above them. One might think, if I hadn't just told you that these are one building, maybe just opposite sides, but these are miles apart, completely separate facilities. And the perfect set of circumstances for the NAACP to say, we're not here to talk buses or the building. We're here to talk about what happens when you separate these children. To steal the words of Thurgood Marshall, who Charles Hamilton Houston handed off to after the Sweat case, or handed off leadership of the NAACP's legal team, to steal from Thurgood, he said, these are children who attend or who live in public. Now, let me restart. These are children who live in integrated neighborhoods. They play in integrated public parks. They will go on to integrated high schools here in Kansas. So what magic is it that separates these elementary school children? Telling the defense, we want to hear the quiet part out loud. What are you telling our kids by keeping them separate? And to drive home and to prove their point a little bit, they have social scientist, Dr. Kenneth and Mamie Clark to explain exactly what was being taught to children when they were segregated. See, the Clarks had actually wanted to see what happens in neighborhoods where segregation's against the law, but people tend to live in a racially isolated neighborhood anyway. What happens when they're a part of town, a black part of town, a Hispanic part of town, even though the schools might be the same, the people isolate. And the NAACP said, that's a very interesting study. Would you explain where the burden of the law so compared and contrasted? And the Clarks agreed to work with them and expanded the study and talked with over 200 children, north and south alike, white and black alike, using these baby dolls over the hand side here. So we see this is one of the original dolls. It's normally in the exhibit galleries, but we've sent it out for cleaning for a couple of months. They're taking care of the doll and making sure it's preserved. But they showed children this doll and a white doll. And they asked a series of questions about these two dolls made of the same material, basically the same design, just a different skin tone, same diaper, same everything. Was nice. Which one is mean? Pretty. Pretty, ugly, smart, dumb. All of these positive negative questions. And these north and south alike, white and black alike. Would point to the positive or the positive things to the white doll and they'd attribute the negative things to the black doll. And then at the end of the test, the Clarks would ask them, which doll looks most like you? And what they would find is white children would feel guilty picking the white doll. Cause it meant they were nice, smart and pretty for no reason other than being white and they would show guilt. But more importantly, black children would refuse to answer. They would cry, they would leave the room. They would even choose the white doll. And this didn't happen in places like. This happened in places like New York, places where things look so similar that one might not be able to tell. And so what the Clarks did was that it wasn't the difference in circumstance, but the act segregation itself. That caused psychological damage to the black self-image that was unlikely to heal. To put it in plain terms, you play a child over and over and over again that they are not good. The worst thing in the world will happen. They will believe. And when it happened, simply because of the color of skin, it was downright illegal. See, the states had this obligation to protect all of their uh or all people in their jurisdiction equal. And yet here they are making a law that requires some children be told they aren't good enough while others are treated fairly. And so they had black children that were psychologically damaged for life because it had happened at the habit of age. And when the uh Supreme Court hears this evidence, they recognize the damage that this is dealing. And specifically, it was actually the the federal court for the uh District of Kansas. Uh or the federal district court for the state of Kansas that first recognized it caused adverse learning environment for. Uh students of color. Supreme Court confirms this and they expand on the decision. Saying that in the realm of public education, the doctrine of separate but equal has no place. Separate educational facilities are inherently unequal. Setting what would become a groundbreaking decision in the wake of. The idea of the Supreme Court saying separate is completely acceptable. It's completely understandable. To segregate an entire population with the Plessy decision. To the idea of making this minimal equalization change. Um with all of these court cases, the N double A C P had taken up to that point to finally come out and say. That it was unequal and unfair, set a groundbreaking precedent. And because of the nature of the argument, it didn't have to do with the schools or the resources or the lesson plan. It had to do with what happens when you tell a population they are less than another. People could ask the question, if we are not supposed to segregate in public schools. What about everything else? What about lunch counters, buses, movie theaters, housing? All of those questions could be asked. But they weren't asked without resistance. Even trying to uh get children to attend these public schools in some form of a timely fashion took work. These uh Little Rock nine that a lot of folks will instantly recognize this photo in the back here. Um children trying to integrate their public school, Central High School in Little Rock, Arkansas nineteen fifty six. The governor shuts down public schools so that they can't go until the fifty seven school year. He actually only opens it back up because white parents had thrown a fit and said, my kid needs to go to school, but keep all of the black children out. And so he gets the National Guard to try and keep children out of school. Children showing up to armed individuals telling them to go home. That gets the attention of President Eisenhower, who federalizes that unit, who sends in the hundred and first airborne. To keep those units in line and to get these nine children into school. That federal enforcement and that executive enforcement had not been seen up until that point. And that's where we have people able to expand on this uh issue where we start to see. If we can do it in schools, we can do it anywhere else. And they come back to Ruby Bridges. I've only got about nine minutes. Where we start to see people standing up in, you know what? No, I'm gonna go back. I'm gonna cover Ruby Bridges. I'll do it very quickly. He was actually uh born the same year as the Brown v Board decision in nineteen fifty four. She was actually born in September. She turned twenty this year. But her state had taken so long to integrate that she was sixty at the time she was going to integrate her elementary school. She was supposed to be part of a larger group, but the other children pulled their kids out for fear for their safety. And so she had been ordered by US Marshals every single day to go into the school building where then the school district said. You can come in the building, but we're gonna move all the white kids across the hall so they don't have to talk to you. And you know what? We're gonna hire a teacher who just moved down from the north, Miss Barbara Henry. And she's gonna teach you alone because none of our other teachers want anything to do with you, just because of the color of your skin. And so every. Ruby faced a crowd of grown men and women threatening to burn her house, poison her food. And kill her parents just for going to school. And she was told to keep her head down, not to say anything, not to speak out against the crowd because they would turn violent. They would hurt her, they would hurt her family. And her teacher recalls seeing her coming up the steps one day, seemingly speaking to the crowd. And she says, Ruby, you're not supposed to talk to them. What in the world were you saying? And she says, oh ma'am, I wasn't talking to them. I was just praying for them. And regardless if you're religious or not, you have to admire the strength of character of a six year old girl to wish well. Who want her head. For her to say they just don't understand or they're just afraid and she was just praying for. And as powerful as that story is, as powerful as the Little Rock nines is, they're not alone. They're just the ones who made the news. Ruby just, she's the one that's still be painted. Norman Rockwell made that infamous painting of her. She's the household name. They don't mean a special story. Countless others went through most identical situations. People even thinking with that same strength of character that Ruby had saying. If we not to segregate public schools, then what about our buses, our lunch counters, our movie theaters? Just getting to the Civil Rights Act of sixty four. People like Dolores Huerta, that uh a relief of her holding up the sign welga. We can't discriminate based off race, then what about uh all of these other things? Just getting in the Civil Rights Act of sixty fours is great, but what about workers' rights? Seeing all the way through uh uh the nineteen seventies, there's the the pink and lavender movements, more women's rights and orientation rights. Getting into the eighties with Dolores Huerta saying, well, workers' rights. Getting into uh heck, even the eighties, we have uh uh people ability saying, is my struggle any different than the one? Because in the nineteen eighties in America, if you didn't have a friend or a gas sort and you didn't have arms, you just didn't open doors. If you didn't go upstairs. Is that any different than the one for uh racially? Even today, we still have people who are challenging um what they uh see as social segregation issues. People challenging this idea of uh unequal treatment across the country. The law can only go so far. We can only correct so many things with legal issues before we have to have some social progress to catch up and push the needle forward. And even on that note, we still have people saying that uh if we can't discriminate based off race or age or our. We have our workers' rights and our ability level. What about the hair that grows on the top of my head? There's a young woman, and this is not uh Ayesha Evans, she's uh police brutality. Uh but there was a a another young woman that she was working in a beauty parlor. Uh African American has their hair in braids, very finely kept, no flyaways, but her boss says. Do you not feel like that's unprofessional for a beauty parlor? Straighten it and dye it blonde or you're fired. And she says, no, this is the natural easiest way to keep my hair. I'm not gonna dye it blonde. I'm not gonna straighten it. And her boss says, okay, you're fired. There's a young man going to to high school and his uh principal is saying, you know what? You've got your hair in it and I feel like that goes against our school's dress code. Shave your head or you're expelled. And the young man says, no, why should I have to shave my head? Change the dress code. The principal expels him. And in both of those instances, no uh uh damages came to the boss or the principal. But they sparked something called the Crown Act. The creating a respectful and open world for natural. When I started working at Brown v Board back in two thousand ninety, only three states had some level of protection. For the hair that grows out of your head. But now, just a few short years later, because people were speaking out, because people were saying. If we can't discriminate here, why are we still discriminating here? Words of discrimination anywhere is discrimination everywhere. Why is it that we're still doing it here? And we've gotten up to twenty three states with protections for the hair that grows out of your head. And so the that this story of Brown v Board leaves behind of this idea of. Challenging injustice and inequality in the world really comes down to two things. First is that we each have an obligation that if we see something that is unequal. To live up to the promise of the Fourteenth Amendment, we have to challenge it. A equal protection of the laws. The citizen's job to make sure that that gets upheld. Because it's when we turn a blind eye to it that people are able to take advantage of it. And the second, it may be hokey, it may sound like an after school special, it may sound silly. But the fact that we have a uh a national park honoring people who did this is positive. That if we all speak out, if we all do our part, we can see real change. There's the ancient proverb, no raindrop believes it's to blame for the flood. But the N double A C P didn't just show up one day and wave a magic wand. Some omnipotent group ended up of people just like you and me who said, what? We see something unequal and unfair and we're gonna try and change it. Gonna show how something is actually illegal that was the accepted practice at the time. And we're gonna show how that's unequal and unfair and how that's actually illegal. And because they stepped up and they were able to challenge that show the. How ethically and immoral and and practice was. We were able to do away a practice of legal racial segregation in the United States. See something unequal or unfair around you. It's not something outside your. You can about it and you can be the legacy of Brown and you can speak out against that. So on note, if we have any questions, comments, concerns.
Yeah, if you have any questions, please feel free to put them in the chat. I I do apologize for our slightly. Lagging connection, but uh you could, yeah, we welcome any questions you may have.
Bring this back up here a little bit.
Preston, could you tell us a little bit about the site that's uh you know, if if one of the audience would like to go visit it in Topeka, what you know, what they could look forward to?
Absolutely. So the museum itself is located in Topeka, Kansas. So we're at fifteen fifteen Monroe Street. And that building that I was showing you with the kindergarten classroom, that is the actual museum space itself and it is the former school. Where Linda Brown was actually attending school during the court case. Um and oddly enough, during the Brown v Board presentation, we don't actually talk much about the Brown family themselves. Um because they were recruited by the N double A C P um and to to kind of humble brag on the family a little bit. The N double A C P came in asking parents, hey, would you enroll your kids so we could go have this case? Um and even today, if you were to talk to the surviving members of the family. Um they say, hey, we really didn't have a big role. Give all of the props to the N double A C P. Um because we were just doing what they asked us to. We were the ones who stepped up at the time. Um and the N double A C P did a lot of the heavy lifting. Um so very, very humble family. Um that fantastic that I've gotten to speak with a couple of them. But even that kindergarten room is set up just the way it was when Linda was uh attending school there. And we even have some extra videos and firsthand accounts from some of the attorneys, some of the plaintiffs, when you were to come walk through the the halls. Where Linda and two other plaintiffs had actually attended school. Um and you'd be able to to hear their accounts of what it was like uh during the court case as well as what it was like after uh and during integration.
Okay, um. We've got some comments now. Excellent program gave more background information than I had heard before. Okay.
I've got a question here I do want to answer because I I've seen it before and I I love to give this answer. So the uh uh. Good program, but how can the legacy of Brown v Board be understood by today's school children if school boards restrict teachings involving race? Something I didn't get to mention because I was rushing through uh uh Ruby Bridges because I I get emotional, I take too long. There are people alive today who threw rocks at Ruby Bridges, trying to make it illegal to teach children how they threw rocks at Ruby Bridges. That is very much some uh a world that we're living in today. And one of the great resources for uh specifically teachers and and something that parents can tell teachers, hey, use this resource. Send them to us. Have them do presentations like this. I've I've done one in New Jersey. I've done one in Florida. I've done one in Texas and that's just this week. Um we can step in and we can say things that teachers can't. Uh we're from out of state. We don't belong to the school district. Uh we're federal employees. We're just talking about the history here. So we have a factual basis of we're just communicating America's history. Um and teachers can send kids to us and we can do this exact presentation. We can talk about all of this. And because we're outside of the system, the teacher basically gets to say, hey, the ranger threw an audible. I didn't know he was gonna cover all of that. But we we can cover some of the hard hitting topics that uh often teachers are afraid to touch. Um and that's just the the great part about being outside of the educational system. Um and something else is uh outside of that, honestly. Talking with your kids, making sure they're aware, um having them talk with their friends. It might not seem like anything to just cover a story like this with your kids one day, but they might see something. Even if it's something like uh that's that doesn't seem the same. Uh like if it's a bullying issue, as long as this legacy is getting stood up of kids speaking out when they notice inequality. It'll eventually come full circle. So we'll be able to at least have another generation of children that when they see inequality, they will call it out.
Okay, here's a question. Is there anything in the Brown v Board Museum regarding the integration of uh our military forces?
Um there is a little bit actually. Um so talking about President Truman leading up to the Brown case. There's not as much as I would like to see uh about integration of our military. Mainly because that was something that um a lot of presidents at the time were really struggling with. Um on whether or not commanders would accept it, their own personal moral issues. Uh logistically, how would it happen? Because they had all these units that would have to be dissolved once they uh uh integrated troops of color. Um so we talk about it as Rangers, we get into these topics. They mention it briefly in some of the interviews with some of the attorneys specifically saying. Hey, we had this precedent based on X, Y, or Z, but that was really just for. The uh District of Columbia case that was one of five that gets rolled up with Brown. Um but not a lot of permanent exhibits that I would like to see. Uh something that we do from time to time, those we do have some temporary exhibits that we'll put up uh around the time of either. Uh the anniversary of integrating the military or maybe different times throughout the year, we'll do that. Uh there's a small one for Veterans Day, which personally being a Air Force veteran, I at least like to talk a little bit about it. Um but at the school or at the the site, we try to stay pretty focused on the Brown v Board decision specifically instead of. Every aspect of integration and just show here's what could come because of the case.
Okay, we did have one question from our audience. Who are you funded by?
Uh we are the National Park Service, uh so we are funded by you. Uh it is taxpayer dollars. Uh that are keeping our doors open. And so that's why we are always trying to do outreach programs like this and. Make sure that we can communicate the uh story of Brown v Board with as many people as possible. Um slightly offset a little bit whenever you go to some of the larger parks, you might have to pay a fee or something to get into those larger parks. As well as organizations like the uh Western National Parks Association, the Eastern National Parks Association. Um those concessions that they get as well as those uh entrance fees, those offset the tax dollars a little bit as well to try and keep the costs a little bit lower. Um than if we just got a exclusively congressional budget.
Okay, I think that's all the questions that we've had so far. If you have uh have a question, we still have time to answer that. Very interesting program. I really enjoyed it. In fact, I it's inspiring me to go visit, visit the site in Topeka.
Well, and we're we're glad to hear that and hopefully um if you see something unequal and unfair as well, hopefully you will point it out, call it out. Um, and hopefully we'll be able to have a uh beat the tolerance paradox, the uh. Oh, what is it? The intolerance of intolerance.
Okay, uh, if we don't have any more questions, I think we can go ahead and call it a night. Thank you so much for a really interesting presentation. I I'd actually uh love to hear more. Uh, and I I think I might have to make a road trip, so uh.
Absolutely. And if anybody, any last minute questions after we hop off and you're like, oh, shoot, I wish I would have asked. Uh, NPS.gov, so like nationalparkservice.gov. Um, and then slash, we've got four letters for all of our parks. Ours are BRVB. Uh, and we've got just about all the same information and more uh that I just went through on there. Um, I've actually got an eight thousand word uh piece that I put on there as well for folks wanting to go on a self guided tour. Uh, everything between that and videos aimed at five year olds, we've got them on the site, so.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and say good night. Oh, thank you for the website, Earl. Great. Uh, I'm gonna say good night to everyone. Uh, keep, keep your eye on our our future programs. We'll look forward to seeing you again and thank you very much for our wonderful presentation. I really enjoyed it.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me. I really appreciate you having me.
Good night, everyone.